Mr. Truesdale, could you please call the roll?
Ms. Daniels. Ms. Davis.
Present.
Ms. Green.
Present.
Mr. Jones.
Here.
Ms. Rolls.
Present.
Mr. Rodriguez.
Present.
Ms. Bowers.
Present, thank you. We are going to go a little bit of out of order as you heard Councilwoman Daniels hasn't joined us yet. So we are going to begin with the business of the Public Safety Committee. I will defer to our Public Safety Committee Chair, Councilman Jones.
Thank you, President Bowers. So we have Mr. Luff. Our legal here representing the administration.
Yes, Jonathan Luff.
Okay, go ahead.
My apologies, Assistant City Solicitor. So what we have here is Resolution 20 of 2025. This is the resolution approving the submission of the petition for the Pennsylvania Liquor Control Board. There was a map that was already in place. This ordinance had ran out as of January of this year and so we are continuing it for another five years. Open it up for any questions.
So I'll explain that part again. So you're saying the one that you have now as it stands as Resolution 20. You're looking to extend that for another five years, correct?
So the actual noise ordinance was from 2020 until 2025 and it ran out January of 2025. And so we are looking to extend that from 25 until 30 for another five years.
Good, good. So for me, you know, the last work session that we had, I'm gonna just again say that I'm gonna be looking to make an amendment to revert this map back to Resolution 85 of 2017 for that same extension.
And with that. Yep. So what, correct. What Jared is handing out right now is the map of 2017. And along with the description of the boundary of what it was in 2017, which is what I believe, Councilman Jones, what you would ask for.
Yes. So I'll let my colleagues take a look at the map first. And if you guys can, I don't know if you had a chance or if you looked over what they were proposing for Resolution 20 of 2025, where the map was cut off at Forster Street. And I'm looking to join our legislative to bring this back to 85 2017. So you guys pretty familiar, Councilwoman Davis, Vice President Green? Alright, so what I'll do right now is I don't have any questions. It's pretty clear what I'm asking. And I'll open up the floor to my colleagues and see if they have any questions. And I'll start to my immediate right, Councilman Rodriguez.
Thank you, Chair Jones. Do you feel from a legal perspective, there'll be any challenges or discrepancies from any local businesses or residential areas outside of the map or directly outside of the map? Like, has there been any contention thus far?
None that I know. Be kind of hard to guess or speculate, you know, who would outside of this map have issues.
But nobody reached out?
No, not as far as I am aware. I believe Councilman Jones, the reason why he wanted to extend it to this map is to encompass those businesses who have reached out specifically to him.
Yep, okay, no further questions for me, thank you.
Councilwoman Ross?
Thank you, I'm Councilman Jones and good evening. Thank you for being here today to present this for us, Mr. Luff. I just want the residents who are online to know the process of what will happen with the amendment that Mr. Jones is making with the public comment, just so they know what's coming up when it comes to their voices being heard about what they think about the map being amended.
Absolutely, so there will be actually two times to where the public can come and make comment. You guys have to vote on this, so they would be allowed to come to that legislative session and make comment on this as well as once it gets passed by City Council, then it goes, the Liquor Control Board will have their own public meeting and it will be held right here. So they'll have two chances right here in this building to come and make comment. And they can let the Liquor Control Board know specifically the same way they can come to you guys.
Thank you for telling us about the Liquor Control Board being here. I did not know they would be a part of the meeting as well. So that's helpful to us and to the public, so.
Yeah, I just want to clarify, they actually have their own pub, so it won't be you guys have one and then.
Then they have one separately where they, oh, okay. Gotcha, okay. So they would need to go to both meetings to express their, if they need to, I should say. So when the Liquor Control Board has their meeting, will that be posted on our website? Like, how will residents know, okay, the Liquor Control Board is having a meeting that deals with businesses that are in my area about this map being amended back to what it was? How will they know, do you know how they?
So it's gonna be publicly, yes, the same Sunshine Act.
Okay.
So we would have to put that out there.
Okay, thank you. That's all the questions I have. I mean, I know that previously, and correct me if I'm wrong, these businesses were a part of the noise control ordinance and then they were cut out of the noise control ordinance. And that's when it got amended to, so first it was what it was in 2017, they were a part of it. Then there was some type of change where they were cut out, so now we're basically just restoring to what it was in 2017. Would that be correct?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. I just want to make sure that nothing happened that, that they were cut out, that.
Can't answer why it changed in 2017?
Yes.
I don't know, but I can tell you that this is what it was in 2017. It did in fact change and now it is going back to.
What it originally was, which I think is important to know, right? I don't know, I don't remember anything happening, but I don't think a lot of people knew it changed either, except the businesses that were affected. So that's all my questions, concerns and knowledge for the public, so that's it for me, thank you.
President Bowers?
Thank you. I just have two questions. I wanted to know if we could please review the new boundaries or the former boundaries, I guess, that would be included in the amendment, just so everybody's aware.
Where it was cut off at Forster and where it's going to go back to in 2017, if I'm correct?
Yes.
You haven't put it like on, I don't know that I have it exactly where it was before. As far as the description, I have the description as to what it's changing to. See if I have the written description as to what it was.
Okay, just want to be clear so everybody knows the.
And do you want me to read it onto the record as to what it was?
Yes, please, just so everybody can hear, because everyone can't see what we have.
Not a problem, okay. So it was beginning at a point being the center of the intersection of Forster and North Street, then southerly along the center line of North Front Street to midpoint of the former Cumberland Valley Railroad tracks, then easterly along the center line of the former Cumberland Valley Railroad tracks to the Harrisburg Transportation Center, then northerly along the eastern boundary of the Harrisburg Transportation Center to the center of Market Street, then westernly to the eastern lot boundary of tax parcel 09002031, known as Fifth, Five North Fifth Street. Then northerly and westernly following the lot boundary of Five North Fifth Street to the center of North Fifth Street, then northerly along the center line of North Fifth Street to the center of the intersection with Walnut Street, then easterly along the center line of Walnut Street to the center of the intersection with North Seventh Street, then northerly along the center line of North Seventh Street to the center of the intersection with Forster Street, then westerly along the center line of Forster Street to the center of the intersection with North Front Street being the place of end.
Thank you. And then my second question is, I know in previous discussion, we weren't clear on the number of businesses that would be impacted, so I just wanted to know if there were any updates there.
As far as the num, I just want to make sure I understand your question. Are you asking how, like, how many businesses are impacted by it changing?
Yes.
I do not have that answer off the top of my head.
So what it was, what they did show is, we looked at a map of all of the licensed businesses that had liquor licenses in there and it's quite a few, it's a pretty large number.
I'm sure there are more than there were in 2017 because other businesses have emerged since then.
Absolutely, but again, from looking at the map that you so graciously put together, it was other businesses that have liquor licenses but will not, weren't included in the original map and will not affect them either way.
Okay, okay, thank you.
And I can say that there, we did actually start with everybody who has a liquor license within the city of Harrisburg. And I can show this to you as well, this is where we started from.
Okay. Thanks. Okay, thank you, I don't have any other questions.
Vice President Green?
Thank you, Councilman Jones, thank you for being here tonight. I don't have many questions, just the first question I have is, how many complaints did we get or did we get any complaints of establishments that were part of the old map that we were looking to originally extend?
And I would, my answer to that would be back at the last session, I believe, I can't remember exactly how many he said, but he, Officer, he weren't here, can't remember his name off the top of my head right now. But he had a number of complaints, but he said that he didn't have them broken down as to noise complaints specifically for the liquor, it was just general noise complaints.
Right, so I wasn't sure if we had gotten that information and if not, can we get that information so that we can, you know, just, I mean, general noise complaints doesn't really do us any good, that's just like noise complaints in the city of Harrisburg. And I can probably name a hundred of them that never got responded to, so they probably aren't documented. So the ones that are specific to the establishments with liquor control licenses, I think, will be pertinent. And then even if we can get a list of what those establishments were, so we can see which ones would be affected by the new map or are not affected, I think that would be helpful for me, just, you know, just for knowledge purposes. And this went into place in 2019, correct? This map that.
2017, 2017.
No, the old map, the one that we're currently looking to extend, went into place in 2019, was voted on in 2019 and went into effect by the Liquor Control Board in 2020.
2020, yeah.
Yes.
It ran out in 17, right? Then 18, it was redone?
No, you're talking about the one that you're trying to.
Oh, you're talking about the new one, okay, I got you.
So technically, we're talking about this map, but the residents don't have a copy of this map. The residents don't know anything about this map. The legislation that we're talking about is.
I got you.
So I just wanna, I'm asking questions about the legislation that is before us, so that we can then talk about the amendment at the legislative session. Which, you know, I understand what we're looking to change it to, I just want to have the information on what it is now because then it can help inform our decision on why it might be good to change it to that. Also, I know that Solicitor Grover did note that the Liquor Control Board wasn't happy with the zigzaggy map. Is this map too zigzaggy, do you think, for the Liquor Control Board? With the way that it's extended up and through the city? I thought so. And are we looking to make?
We want that anyway.
I know we want it, but did they have any recommendations?
They wanted a more rectangular map with easy to describe boundaries.
More, more to the one that you see on Resolution 20?
Right, right.
To do that is to immediately cut into our swaths of residential neighborhoods. I mean, that's really the reality when you do that, so. It's for this office to advocate with the City Council's position on this. The City Council in 2017, like this council, started with a different map, the original resolution. Posed that final map and voted on it. And then we advocated that map to Liquor Control Board and it was adopted. They had two recommendations at the time. One was, don't make it so zigzaggy. And two, please don't limit it to two years anymore.
Right.
So we're going with five years, we've met halfway. But I, just from my gray hair, extending these kind of things into the neighborhoods creates a whole different issue for the City Council, the mayor and everybody else. I mean, now you take noise enforcement, put it a whole other place. So I understand the wish of the hearing officer, but it doesn't really serve the people of Harrisburg to take these lines and put them all, like, because you would end up up Front Street all the way over probably Sixth or Seventh Street to have a nice rectangle mark and you'd have an awful lot of residents.
Alright, I completely agree with you. I was just asking as far as, when it moves to the next level, what some of the obstacles that we might face are. And then I had another one. You said you do have a copy of the establishments that we can get a copy of, Mr. Truesdale? That was my other question and I think that pretty much sums it up. That's it, thank you.
Councilwoman Davis?
Thank you, Councilman Jones, and thank you for the updated map. I would like a copy of the establishments also. Thank you, Mr. Truesdale. And in reference to the residents, how can they file a noise ordinance complaint? Or if an establishment is making too much noise in the middle of the night, what do they do?
Well, I mean, if they're within this area, I would say it would be the same thing to make any kind of complaint. You're gonna call, you're gonna call for the help, the police 911, make a complaint and they will allocate it however they allocate it at the time, depending on what that person tells them.
Okay. And how can they follow up if the noise is from an establishment to make sure that their complaint was addressed?
I would say they should follow up in their normal course, so if, depending on who they're complaining to, if they're, you know, they want to come down and speak to City Council, they can do that. If they want to go to the Liquor Control Board, they can do that. There's, it's really gonna be kind of up to them and how they decide what they're saying and what they're looking for.
Okay, and do we have a timeframe for when the Liquor Control Board will be meeting? Do we know any of those dates or?
I know nothing will happen until we actually fill out the application packet and send it to them and that won't happen until we have a resolution passed from you guys, so it's just, that would be step two of the process, the Liquor Control Board, once you guys vote and pass it, then we'll get that ball moving.
Thank you.
And Ms. Daniels isn't here, right? Okay, well, thank, oh, she is? Oh, I apologize. Councilwoman Daniels? Alright, thank you. Alright, thank you. That concludes the work session of public safety and I would ask that this resolution be moved to our next legislative session and I would ask my colleagues to vote in favor. Thank you.
Thank you. We will go backwards on our agenda and move forward with committee business with the Community and Economic Development Committee. I will defer to our committee chair, Councilwoman Daniels, to lead discussion.
Thank you. If Resolution 21 hyphen 2025, if it's read into the record, please.
Resolution 21, 2025, a resolution approving the preliminary slash final lot consolidation and land development plan to construct a new City of Harrisburg Parks Maintenance Facility on site. The existing nearby facility at 901 North 12th Street will be demolished as part of a larger project redeveloping SRTA's operations and maintenance facility at 901 North Cameron Street, which will include the vacation of public right-of-way and consolidation of lots in the block to the south and associated site and access improvements.
Thank you. So if we can start at the beginning or just explaining the relationship between the parties?
As far, good evening, this is, oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, go ahead, I wasn't aware anybody else was here.
Bill Schnorr with StanTech, we're the consulting engineer for the overall project. The plan that's before you right now is the new Parks Maintenance Facility that is proposed at the corner of Hur Street and Cameron Street. And Rich Farr and SRTA and the other members of the team were before council about a month ago explaining the overall larger project. This is the first phase to construct a new park maintenance facility and to be able to proceed into the larger SRTA operation and maintenance facility which would demolish the existing Parks Maintenance Facility.
So I just would like some clarity between like the relationship between the city and the transportation. I guess for me, the resolution is a little bit unclear, I wasn't sure who owns which lot.
Yeah, so this is Rich, the executive director of Transit, and thank you for having us tonight. So the relationship, and there will be a room that could also probably assist in this, but. So our relationship right now will be that you're going to develop the corner of Cameron and Hur Street and relocate the parks directly to that new location. Once that work is done, our relationship will be such that we will come to you and turn that property over to the city at no cost. So it's just part of the project. So that's phase one. That will allow us to demolish the current facility. That will allow us to begin building our operating and maintenance facility, which will include the property where the existing.
Mr. Farr, you're breaking up the natural.
Yeah, probably, I'm sorry, that, we're going. So are you filling some blanks?
I'm not quite sure where you're going with that, Rich, but.
Well, perhaps, perhaps I can take over a little. This is Jeffrey Knight, planning director. So the South Carolina Regional Transportation Authority, which is SRTA, is the owner of all of these, of the subject properties involved in this particular application. They own most of the properties in the block bounded by Hur Street to State Street and Cameron Street to the Harrisburg Cemetery. And in that general area, you have Sunshine Park, you have the existing Parks Maintenance Facility, which is just to the south of that, which is behind where the Goodwill Campus is, right on Cameron Street. And then just to the north of that is SRTA's existing operations and maintenance facility. And so this is really kind of a bit of musical chairs, which is why the project is described as it is. The first step of which is the construction of a new Parks Maintenance Facility at the corner of Hur Street and Cameron Street on properties that are owned by SRTA. And so because SRTA owns most of the properties in this project and because their larger, in this block, and because their larger project is really driving this first phase of the development, they're kind of operating as the master developer for this and therefore they were the applicant on this particular application. Once they're able, once the new facility is built at this location, they will then be able to demolish our existing facility just south of Sunshine Park, which will be part of the footprint of their new operations and maintenance facility that will consolidate some of the, some of the agency's operations and staff into this site and will replace the Goodwill Campus right there. And the reason they're doing it in this sequencing is because they need to have access to the existing operations and maintenance facility, the Cat Barn, you may know it as, throughout this whole thing so that they can keep the system running and keep the system moving. So once they've developed that new facility, then they'll be able to demolish the existing one. So this is really the first phase in that like multi-sequenced project. And again, because CAT or SRTA owns most of these properties, they're kind of functioning as the master developer for this overall project.
So, or so is the city a partial tenant or a tenant in some of these lots or what's the relationship?
So the city owns, you know.
And is that what's it structured?
So the city owns Sunshine Park and it owns this existing, the land that its existing facility is on, just to the south. But once this proj, pardon me? Yes, yes. And, but once this facility is complete, as I think, what Mr. Schnorr was saying, the SRTA will hand over this land on which the facility is built to the city. So they will be selling, I guess, the land to us, once this facility is complete. And then we, I guess, as part of that transfer, and again, I don't know the exact, you know, process by which this will occur, but we will then be selling like our land that the existing facility is on to SRTA for them to do their larger project.
Do we have a kind of agreement that outlines that this is going to be a wash for both entities? Or how, how does this, how does this work?
And Rich can correct me if I'm wrong, this is Neil Grover. But basically, there's a series of entities involved in this process. It's very long, it's very detailed. And numbers of documents will come back to the council over time because any land transfer or land acceptance is a legislative function. This is being driven by, there's professionals who are in place, who have been put in place for the overall plan and the order of events matters for SRTA to be able to build this effectively. So early in this process is getting our, this other building that we're in taken care of and the land transferred. Because of the complexity, we have talked repeatedly about simplifying the legal process, not doing every single piece, you know, separately, but as the overall plan, there's streets involved here that will be roads opened, roads closed, in this, what I consider, maybe others disagree, like a two-block, square-block area. So that, so the whole map of it will come back and the rights of it will come back in a series of documents to council, just like it'll come back to the board at SRTA. You know, there's a lot of approvals that have to happen along the way. There's been a lot of approvals that have happened to date to get it this far along. But there, but to take every one of them and do them one at a time would just slow the track down, you know, from how.
you know, from how we're doing it. So there's been a lot of back and forth, but, but the finals aren't final, if that makes any sense yet. Until you really get into some of the, 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 uh, actual construction and laying of foundations and those things, that kind of detail will keep coming. So it will keep coming through the city for a number of years till this gets final. I've lost track of what the end date is, where they hope to be done all the construction. Um, but, but it, but this process that is, it's about a hundred and fifty million dollar project all in. So it's got a lot of moving parts and a lot of regulators to satisfy along the way. And so there's been a lot of effort to satisfy those regulators at different levels. So, but there will be packages that come back to the council once this moves with specific meets and bounds and things like that. But it's, it's hard to do on the front end, right? The original plan was rejected, you know, and then it sort of started over again. So, so it has to get to its final point. So this is the beginning of a process from, I think, a legal point of view.
So I, so are there, like, any? I guess I'm just kind of not clear on, right? So, so let's say SRTA does the demolition, they'll be doing the demolition of a city property. So like, are there any, or?
Were they built?
Am I missing something?
The, the city building will be built first, the new one. And with that built for us to take over, then the city building that exists, which is the Park of Rec Maintenance, will come down. Right? So that they're replacing our building to let their overall footprint work. So, um, we are benefiting on the front end from a new facility, uh, and they, so they can keep it moving. It's important to remember that the city and what SRTA is, it's a, it's a regional transportation authority. The city has appointed voted seats on that board. So the city is in this process through its representatives on, you know, a monthly basis that they're there, as well as the representatives of the other municipalities that are involved.
Yeah, that's, okay. Um, let's just start with the project, if someone wants to start articulating the project a little bit more. And I guess, uh, Mr. Farno and the applicants can articulate their, their interest in the proposal that we have today.
Sure, uh, I'll just finish giving the, uh...
Someone wants to do it, I think, for the board or CCS.
I'll just, uh, finish giving the Planning Bureau's, um, case report of the Planning Commission's discussion and, uh, resolution. And then I'll hand it over to the applicants to, uh, fill in, uh, many gaps that they feel is necessary. Uh, so again, as I, as I noted, this is the first step in a, a multi-phase process. Uh, the existing, um, footprint of where this site will be is five individual parcels. Um, and it basically includes a canopy of a former gas station at the corner of Hur and Cameron Street. Just behind that is a restaurant that used, was most recently for Aces. Uh, and then behind that, there's a larger industrial building that has had a variety of auto-oriented uses over time. Uh, most of this site is, uh, paved. Um, it's frankly, uh, in various states of, uh, dilapidation. There's overgrown weeds. Uh, so overall, the project is going to, uh, have a significant improvement, um, to this really, um, conspicuous corner, uh, in the city here, at the corner of Hur and Cameron Street. Uh, there will be, um, onsite stormwater management improvements done as part of this. Uh, there'll be two, uh, different buildings, uh, for the Parks Maintenance Facility. Uh, and if, and it's going to be, it's going to significantly modernize, uh, both the, um, facilities for Parks Maintenance Staff, uh, and also the operations. And if you've ever been in the existing Parks Maintenance Building, uh, last time I was there was like, you know, February, and it was cold inside. Like, it's probably not, uh, weather, weatherproofed or climate-controlled. So, uh, this new building, uh, will, you know, really raise the standard of, um, of the city's facilities with respect to this, uh, particular department. Um, uh, in addition to that, uh, there will be some changes to the right-of-way around the site. Uh, right now, there's some curb cuts onto Hur Street. Uh, and although there's not a lot of traffic to and from the sites, um, there is some. And because of the, uh, multiple curb cuts along Hur Street and their proximity to the intersection with Cameron, uh, it can get a little hectic with people going in and out. Um, there'll be a fence pretty much up along the frontages of both Hur Street and Cameron Street as part of this new development. Uh, and all of the vehicular access will come in off 12th Street. Uh, so it will really simplify, uh, vehicular circulation to the site, which will make things safer for everybody. In addition, um, they're going to improve and widen the sidewalks along Hur and Cameron Street. Um, and that's not just important from a general perspective, but, uh, because, um, SRTA's new facility will be located just to the south along Cameron Street, people will be walking along, along Cameron Street, uh, to that facility because there will be a transfer point, um, at that building, um, for certainly the, the near term and maybe, uh, into the, longer into the future. Uh, so it will be necessary to have these, um, pedestrian improvements as part of the overall project. Uh, again, the, um, condition of the site, the appearance of the site will be improved. And also, uh, because the site is located in the, um, hundred-year floodplain, uh, the applicants are working, um, with FEMA to, on a letter of map revision, uh, document to, um, essentially revise the base flood elevation at this site and to make sure that their new construction, uh, is compliant with the city's regulations. We require, uh, eighteen inches above the base flood elevation, uh, which is called the freeboard, uh, in our zoning code. And so the proposed letter of map revision is going to reduce the base flood elevation about three feet, which significantly, you know, changes the construction of the building, um, the, uh, uh, financial feasibility of the building. You have to do a little bit, uh, less in terms of, uh, the overall, um, flood, flood proofing of the structure and the site. Um, so with that all being said, the Planning Commission, uh, has recommended that the City Council approve the request with the following conditions. Uh, the applicant must secure approval of a letter of map revision from FEMA so that the development can proceed as proposed and must eventually receive approval for both the structural demolitions on site, as well as the proposed new construction. And again, the applicants are currently in the midst of coordination with FEMA on that. Uh, the applicant should coordinate with the city arborist to increase the ecological impact and tree canopy on site by incorporating native tree species and pollinator plants, particularly on the western edge of the site, around the stormwater detention infrastructure, which can also address localized air pollution created by the Cameron Street, Hur Street, uh, infrastructure. Uh, and the city arborist actually, uh, review is actually kind of a new, uh, component we are doing with our land development plans, uh, because we have them on staff and we've generally been including it as a condition of approval. Instead of just always adding that, uh, we've incorporated their review, uh, as a formal step in the process, just like we do the codes bureau or the city engineer. Uh, so there are, um, actual, uh, comments from our city arborist on maybe how to improve the overall site, what types of, uh, tree species to use and, and things like, of that nature. And I believe that was included in your packet. And then finally, if possible, the Planning Bureau recommends removing the southernmost vehicular access point onto the site from North 12th Street to clarify vehicular circulation and eliminate a vehicular pedestrian conflict point, which is especially important, given the proximity to Sunshine Park. So in the initial proposal, there were two, um, vehicular access points. Again, this is across the street from the park, but I mean, kids will probably be running up and down this street. And the more we can clarify, uh, where exactly vehicles will be going in and off the site and, in fact, reduce the overall number of those access points, the, uh, safer it will be for all of the people, um, around this area. And I believe the applicants at the Planning Commission, uh, uh, meeting agreed to that condition. Uh, the Planning Commission recommended the City Council approve the request for the following reasons. Project will expand and modernize the city's Parks Maintenance, Maintenance Infrastructure, improving the ability of the Parks and Recreation Department to provide services to residents and a facility that creates better working conditions for staff. The project site is a conspicuous location at the intersection of two state routes. And the removal of dilapidated and underutilized buildings and replacement of large expanses of impervious surface with vegetation and a modern city building will bring aesthetic improvements, not only for passersby, but local residents and workers as well. And finally, through coordination with FEMA, the project will result in a site that is floodplain compliant and more resistant to future flood events in the Paxton Creek Corridor.
The, the only thing I'd add is the, the layout of the, uh, site was coordinated with the Parks Department. Uh, so there's a process of, uh, working with them to determine the size of the buildings, the number of buildings. And there's a, uh, the main building is a maintenance building with the admin attached to, to it, with garage doors on both ends of the maintenance buildings to be able to pull, you know, trucks with trailers on through the, through. And then, uh, also is a, uh, is a storage building associated with it. And, you know, sufficient parking and, and, uh, material storage bins, uh, on site too.
Um, so I guess I'll just have to open this for the questions from my colleagues. I'll start to the, all right, with Councilwoman Daniels.
Thank you, Councilwoman Daniels. I don't have any questions. Um, Neil and, uh, Mr. Knight, you pretty much explained everything that's going to take place. And I understood clearly what you were saying. I can appreciate that the city arborist, uh, governing the tree species and everything around the site is going to be involved with this. And also that the services are going to be increased for the residents. I don't think there's any bus services in that area currently. So being that it's centralized right there in the middle of, uh, Cameron Street, I'm just hoping that residents could, uh, get a bus, go either in the uptown area or the opposite direction. That would just be a really nice feature, uh, to this service. But thank you, uh, everyone, for, uh, being here tonight, and thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you. Vice President Green?
Thank you very much. Um, I don't really have any questions. Um, it looks like, um, a good opportunity for the city. Uh, I've, I've been in that building, um, many years ago, and it needed to be upgraded then. So I can only imagine that, um, the people working there would be happy with upgrades. And I can see that, uh, city services will improve from it. So, um, I don't have any questions about this particular part of the project. Thank you.
Vice President Powers?
Thank you. I don't have any questions. Many that I did have have been asked and answered. Thank you.
Um, Councilwoman Ross?
Uh, thank you, Councilwoman Daniels. Um, I don't have any questions. Um, I'm just a visual person, so I wish I could see it in color. I know we saw the new transit, I believe, the last time, what that, that may look like. So I just wanted to see what the new Parks and Rec building would look like or what the finished product would look like once it was done. I know it's not going to be exact, but, um, but other than that, no questions. I think it's, of course, a good opportunity, um, for us to upgrade those, um, areas in the city, especially when it comes to transportation and then the Parks and Recreation, um, building. Plus, it's going to take the eyesores away right there on Cameron Street, because of those two buildings, the gas station and, um, well, restaurant. But, uh, it's no longer being used. So, um, you know, I'm always there for us to take blight away, so that's fine. So thank you. Thank you for being here tonight.
Um, Councilmember Rogers?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, with Cameron Street being a PennDOT-owned and ran corridor, what role will they play in this project?
There are multiple, uh, HOPs that will be required, highway occupancy permits, they'll be required for it. On this particular one, uh, there, there will be two. One for the sidewalk improvements, and the same HOP will close the existing driveways on Hur Street. Uh, and then there will be a separate one that, uh, will be in the name of CRW. And, uh, we're working with them. They actually will submit that HOP. And that's just for a simple, uh, uh, storm sewer pipe connection to an inlet out that discharges from the stormwater basin.
Okay. And the Goodwill Building, that's across the street, correct?
It's, it's on the same, same block. Uh, it's on the, uh, east side of Cameron Street.
But that would be a crossover by the gas station.
It, it'd be on the opposite side. You have the, um, corner that we're talking about, and then the Rabbit Transit or the Cat Facility. And then it's right next to the Cat Facility.
Yeah. But you, you just, you were bringing up Sunshine Park, which is actually across the street or behind.
Across, uh, twelve.
Yep, across twelve, yep. And then, um, just to echo what, uh, Chair Daniels was saying, it would be good to see some kind of MOU, because, you know, just historically, the city's gotten to similar things throughout time, and it's kind of got messy and murky. You know, they promised this, they promised that. Some kind of memorandum of understanding probably would benefit if that is doable. This way, we don't, in the long run, get caught in any murky business. Um, that's probably, that would benefit the city a great deal. But, um, I really have no other further questions than that. Thank you all. Yep.
Uh, thank you, Councilwoman Daniels. Um, so I have two, two questions. Um, on 12th Street, that terrain is horrible right now. And you know, summer, spring is getting here, and you know, a lot of our residents are going to be utilizing Sunshine Park. Is there any plan to pave that road back there? And if so, what's the timeline on that?
There, there currently are no plans to, uh, make significant improvements as far as height because of, uh, the direction that we received from the mayor's office not to impact Sunshine Park. So Sunshine Park is not being impacted if...
Not the, not the park itself, the road on 12th Street. When you come in off of her and you turn down in there, I'm sure you've been back there.
Yeah, yeah.
That is horrible back there. And it's been like that for a very long time. And I'm just wondering, who's, are we responsible for that? Are you guys going to pave that road?
I, I would, currently, the plan's, you know, call for resurfacing, but we certainly can take a look at that.
That would be wonderful. I think it would save some axle bending, uh, potholes.
Well, and I, I would imagine you'd probably not want to resurface it now because that would be a construction access for all the demolition and construction.
Got you. But I'm saying, if, if, I mean, knowing that there's nothing there, but if that's something that they consider. And again, I was just wondering if it, now that we know that it's not there, I hope you guys can, some type of way, put that in your plans. Uh, the other question that I have, again, um, a solicitor Grover mentioned a hundred and fifty million dollar project. I think the total was one seventy-five, if I'm not correct, if I'm correct. In the end, it'd come out to a hundred and seventy-five million, right?
The cost estimates?
Yes.
I think they're close to one fifty. Yeah, for the overall project, I think it's one fifty.
All right, then I seen one seventy-five for like total. But either way, a hundred and fifty million is a lot of money. Um, what are we looking at, any, um, when you put out your RFPs? How are we connecting with some of the local businesses here in the city of Harrisburg?
Uh, if you recall, uh, last month when we were before council, Mr. Varr, uh, indicated that they were planning on like a, uh, a mixer with the, uh, you know, prime contracts and local contractors to make that introduction. And, uh, so that, they would plan to do that.
Yeah, that, I think that would be, um, a great idea. Um, again, when we're looking at this kind of spending in the city, um, we'd definitely be able to include, uh, some of these local businesses. And, and, and that will help with some jobs here, even though they're not the prime and you sub, you definitely can, um, extend, you know, some of that money right here in the city. Um, so that's something that I will be looking for, uh, moving forward and then try to stay close to you guys when it comes to that part. But other than that, um, I think this is a great facility that's going to be built, and it definitely will turn some, uh, eyesores into something very nice to look at, uh, moving around in that area. So, thank you. No more questions.
Thank you. Are there any other questions or comments from either the presenters or the council members?
Just a comment, uh, Chair Daniels. Um, Director Knight, you had mentioned the importance of the sidewalks and making sure those are not only AD compliant, but just, you know, um, appropriate for the project. Just a side note, while we have our engineer in the building, we still have older communities like up on State Street that don't have any sidewalks. So, you know, somehow, some way, if we can, and it's just like a sidebar, if we could somehow, some way kind of figure that out, especially up by Reservoir, we have senior citizens literally walking in the road just to get to their homes, no sidewalks. I could even send you, uh, pictures if you need, but something we could potentially look at together. Um, and that's all. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, everyone. Let's go ahead and add this to the next legislative session and that the board's a business of the committee.
Thank you. Our last committee business for this evening lies with the Public Works Committee. I will defer to our Public Works Committee Chair, Councilman Rodriguez, to lead discussion.
Thank you, Madam President. Um, to begin public works, we will be discussing Resolution 24 of 2025. Mr. Truesdale, do you mind reading Resolution 24, 2025 into the record?
Resolution 24, 2025. A resolution authorizing the City of Harrisburg to negotiate and enter into a professional services agreement with Urban Engineers Incorporated for the purpose of providing construction inspection and construction management services on an as-needed basis.
Thank you for that. And I do see the city's engineer here, as well as a representative from Urban Engineers. If you would like to speak directly into the mic and state your name and your role in the city, just for the residents at home, and then just kind of give us an overhaul of Resolution 24, 2025.
Sure, my name is Joel Sladez. I'm the...
My name is Joel Siders. I'm the city engineer.
Thank you.
Hello, my name's Brian Peet. I represent Urban Engineers out of our local office here.
Thank you both for being here. Joel, if you'd like to give us just an overhaul of what Resolution 24, 2025 encompasses?
Sure. So the city of Harrisburg has a lot of upcoming construction projects. We have Sycamore Street, Berry Hill Street, Chestnut Street, and that's just this year. In the future, we're going to have much larger corridors such as Division Street, Walnut Street, some work on Hur Street. And it's also my intent, similar to Sycamore and Berry Hill Street, to continue that program throughout the city, just, like you said, everywhere needs work. So I do not want to slow down on any of the construction. And then, on the, I call it smaller side, but still significant, is we have a lot of utility work being done in the city, and that requires what we call a street cut permit. And last year alone, we had over 500 of these. And this is where they dig up the road, and then we kind of inspect it and make sure they put it back according to the city's specifications. And quite frankly, we're just understaffed to do all these larger projects, 500 smaller projects, which is why I went forward with an RFP for construction inspection services to help the city on an as-needed basis. So it's not a constant, constant work, but it's as needed. And as we start to get overwhelmed, I can call on the select firm to kind of assist. And Brian and Urban Engineers put it together a fantastic proposal. I have no issues recommending them for selection.
And when you put the RFP out, how many applicants replied to that?
So it was put out onto a Penn bid. I know we had at least 40 different firms take documents. We've only received two proposals. But the team that Urban put together is just fantastic. I've worked with some of them in the past. I know a lot of them have done work in the city in the past. I see no issues.
And for the selection, was it you that made the selection, or was that done by?
It was our committee.
Okay.
It was me and one other in the Public Works Department.
Yep, I actually spoke with Director West and Mr. Jackson today, just to get a little bit of background of it, so I'm a bit familiar. If our rep from Urban Engineers would like to say a few words to council?
Yes, I'd just like to thank you for this opportunity.
You might need to bring it a little closer.
No, I just want to say one thank you for this opportunity here. One thing I would like to just share is that we decided to assemble a large team of consultants here. So now, it's not only Urban Engineers. We brought five other companies on to our firm, on our team for this work. That way, we can, you know, share the work with our teaming partners. We take pride in that. You know, sharing, you know, opportunities with other companies and get other people involved with this work. You know, we have done work in the city of Harrisburg since 2017. We're very familiar with the city, the processes. We worked on the Third Street Multimodal Project. So if you're familiar with that quarter, going up through the market there, and also did a lot of work doing inspection and construction management on Second Street. So like I said, we've done quite a bit of work in the city, you know, and hope our service will assist drill.
Absolutely. And with the other entities that you brought on board, do you know the participation at all, with, like, MBE, WBE participation?
So we have two MBE firms on board, three in consulting, in the Varin Wright, and we have a WBE firm, JBC Associates. They're located here in the city limits. And Joel can second this. In our past agreements, we really do try to increase our MBE participation. I know in some agreements, we've been over 20%, so we take pride in that.
That's amazing. That's amazing. I have no further questions. I think, like, as you said, Joel, we have a lot of work to do. And, you know, if we can get great people in that know what they're doing, that can do the work appropriately, and, you know, really take care of the city, I think the more, the better. Is there, are there any conflicts of interest that you think may appear between any of the other entities that you have with the city? Do you foresee any by chance?
I'll speak first here. So the reason we put together a large team, should there be a conflict of interest? Any firm that might be conflicted in that particular work, which is not be able to be involved with that particular project?
Perfect. Perfect. Awesome. Well, I have no further questions. Thank you both for being here. And I'll open the floor up to council, starting to my immediate left, with Councilman Jones.
Thank you, Councilman Rodriguez. So, yeah, my question is similar to Councilman Rodriguez. When you're looking at these other entities, and I know you say that they're Harrisburg-based, just because they're in the city limits. You know, again, I'm always going to be an advocate to make sure some of, when I say local, I'm not talking about Reading, York. I'm talking about people right here in the city of Harrisburg. I'm not sure if you, do you have a list of any of those individuals that could potentially assist you as you're moving forward? Are you aware of some of the local trade schools that some of our young people? I'm saying even down to a gopher job, man. I'm just saying.
So this industry has been a huge struggle for the entire industry. We are open to anybody that wants to apply for a job with us. We have, always have an open application for construction inspectors on site. We've been going to trade schools, just trying to get interest in this industry. So if there's an opportunity, we definitely want to look into that. We pay for all their certifications, get them trained.
That's, I think that's a great opportunity. We have to begin to try to make pathways for some of the individuals here to get into some of this, because I know a lot of these industries are dying, carpenters, electricians, all types of things. So we do have some things set in place here, not just DC Tech, but we have some other organizations that are working with people right here as residents in Harrisburg. And I think that this, again, could be another great opportunity for us to be able to couple those things. So if you need any assistance, I'm readily available and try to point you in some good directions.
I would love any information on that. It'd be very helpful.
All right, no problem. And for me, that's it.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilwoman Ross?
Thank you very much. My only question was, I know you said as a need, on a needs-to basis, do you have maybe a rough estimate on how many times you may need to call on Urban Engineering to help out? Just like cost-wise, because I know it's by hourly. I did see that in the resolution. So just a rough estimate, how much we might be spending with the percentages?
The contract would be on an as-needed basis, and it would be dictated by my consulting line item, so I couldn't exceed that budget. But I foresee no more than $100,000 per year for the three years, for a total of $300,000.
Okay. Thank you for that information. And it's kind of like, like you said, almost, I don't want to say checks and balance, but a little bit, because you say we don't have the manpower at the moment.
Actually, checks and balances would be a great description, because we have to hold the contractors to the city's standards.
Correct. And that's where Urban Engineering would come in. Okay, I think that's great. Thank you. That's it for me.
Awesome. Thank you, Councilwoman. Madam President?
I don't think I have any questions. It's a three-year, it would be a three-year agreement. You mentioned some of the projects. Okay, maybe one question. Related to the projects for this year, I guess, as soon as this is enacted, do you envision their assistance through the end of the year at all?
Yes, as soon as, as soon as we have their assistance, I'm going to use them wherever we can.
Okay, thank you. I don't have any other questions.
Thank you, Madam President. Madam Vice President?
Thank you for being here tonight. I don't have any questions. Thank you for the presentation, a very detailed proposal, and thank you for the detailed fee schedule, so that's it.
Thank you. Councilwoman Davis?
Thank you, Councilman Rodriguez. Good evening, gentlemen. You mentioned, okay, you've been working with the city for many years. Have you ever offered any jobs through MBE or utilized any of the businesses in the city? And if so, who are they?
We haven't used any of those entities in the city that I'm aware of. We're kind of locked to who we bring on to our agreement at the beginning of the agreement, essentially. But there are qualified firms, you know, and there's opportunity to bring them on our team. We would certainly be open to that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilwoman Daniels? Awesome. Is there anything you gentlemen would like to add before I make a motion? Yep, Councilwoman, yep.
I just wanted to say really quick, Mr. Siders, just thank you for what you had said earlier about not wanting to stop. You were saying that there's lots of roads in our city that, you know, need to be upgraded, fixed sidewalks. But just thank you for just saying that you were determined to get that done. I think that's great.
You're welcome. There's always work to do.
Yes, there is in Harrisburg, but we'll keep you busy, but I just appreciate you seeing our city.
All right. And before I make a motion to add to our next legislative session, I'd like to see if council has any other questions, concerns, comments? All right, hearing none, I'd like to make a motion to add this to our next legislative session, which I believe April 22nd, Madam President. And that concludes the business of the Public Works Committee. Thank you.
Thank you. We will move forward with our meeting agenda. Next, we have public comment. Just a few housekeeping notes before we begin. Please state your name and your address for the meeting record. If you don't feel comfortable sharing your address, please share the vicinity in which you live within the city. You will have four minutes to share your comments. We have a new timer that I hope everyone is able to see. It is green, and to assist with being mindful of time. We're not sure when time is up, what it will sound like, but we're going to test it out this evening. Okay, Mr. Truesdale will operate our new timer. I will begin to my right. Is there anyone that would like to offer public comment?
Hello? Hey, I'm Mark Santanas, around the clock. It's my goal to not be the one to have the thing go off here, so. I'm Mark Santana. I live at 200 block of Liberty Street in downtown Harrisburg. I've lived here for 25 years. I come here as a city resident, as well as the president of Capital Area Neighbors. Our jurisdiction goes from Fortress Street to Walnut Street, Front Street, to Third Street. So basically, the first area map is our jurisdiction. But I'm also here as a resident, supporting the extension into Midtown, because although this is in the Public Safety Committee, I believe this to be also an economic development component. I lived here in 2000 when they first started the Restaurant Row. I think the first Liquor Control Board exempted area started in 1999. Is that correct, Neil? But anyway, when I moved into town, Arugas was a boarded-up building. Like, it was dead downtown. There was nothing going on. And when Mayor Reed had started the Liquor Control Board exempted area, it opened it up and allows us to police ourselves instead of the Liquor Control Board commenting and policing. So I think the key component here is to say Harrisburg can take care of our own. We can police ourselves. As explained, there's many citizens still can call 911. They can go to the LCE. They have many angles to, if someone wants to act out. We don't need the LCB in Harrisburg policing us. We can police ourselves. So I would like to support Resolution 20 and the amendment to add Midtown, because I believe Harrisburg is in crisis, downtown is in crisis. Anyone that opens a bar or a restaurant, or still is hanging on with a bar or restaurant, should be commended and has a lot of courage. We should be trying to help them as much as we possibly can. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else to my right?
Hello, I'm Ed Jarak, 1521 North Third Street, apartment 1. Has my timer started? Okay. If you go over, there's a trap door, and you go down. Anyway, I'm here also for Resolution 20, 2025, to approve the map, including Councilman Jones' amendment to extend up into Midtown. I think my tone is basically, I want to be supportive of the businesses, the entrepreneurs. Make Harrisburg a good place to invest. And I think also the other comment, you know, in the unlikely idea of there is a complaint, I do agree with the concept of local control, right? People can come here, and, you know, if they've got a problem, we don't need five layers of management at the state and meetings that take whatever, all kinds of time. So for those reasons, I hope you approve it tonight, and appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else to my right that would like to offer public comment?
Ryan Weatherford, 1100 North Third Street. Shalom to my Jewish brothers. Saw what happened to Josh Shapiro on the news. We condemn any anti-Semitism. I'm not too sure what happened with that one, but I think violence reduction, gang reduction. I agree with all my brothers over there to the right about the Liquor Control Board. I think we can police ourselves. There's a lot of homelessness out there. You know, I walk everywhere. My girlfriend has a car, because she pregnant. She got a Chevy white Malibu. So I say all that to say, when you walk around Harrisburg, like, I got like 100,000 steps this week. I work at Prudential as a financial advisor. There's a lot of shenanigans going on out there. So I would just ask that, you know, liquor control with all that stuff, you know, we just got to keep Harrisburg sovereign. That's all I would say, Your Honor. That's all. But again, Josh, what up, baby? That's all I got to say.
Thank you. Okay, is there anyone else to my right? I don't want to miss anyone. Okay, seeing and hearing. No one? Anyone in the middle section?
Good evening, council. My name is John Trainer. I'm here representing the Harrisburg Midtown Arts Center project on Third Street, and it's in Resolution 20. It's actually critical for the survival of music venues in the city, both in Midtown and Downtown. Without it, they wouldn't be able to function. And I would also draw your attention to the fact that the 2017 map was actually a continuing resolution from 2014. So in 2014, Midtown was included in the noise exemption. And then again, and in those days, you had a 14, three-year extension for the LCB. And then the LCB did another extension in 17 to 2019. How the map changed in 2019, we have no idea, right? Because as somebody that would have been affected by it, we were giving no notice of it. And we believed, as did other businesses in Midtown, that we were part of that noise exemption. So I think it might have been an oversight when they put that map together in 2019. They went back to prior to 2014, because the, it was a continuing resolution from 2000, well, 1999 to 2002. And then 2017, there was an amendment to that continuing resolution. And then 19, we have no idea what happened there. So I just wanted to bring that to your attention. It's not just the 17 map. It actually was affected in 2014. And thank you for your time.
Thank you. Is there anyone to my left that would like to offer public comment?
Good evening, council president and members of the city council and members of the public. My name is Robert Williams, and I reside in the Capitol Heights section of Harrisburg. I appear before you today formally to propose a new ordinance titled Police Transparency and Accountability Reporting Ordinance. I have brought physical copies of the proposed ordinance this evening for the chief of, for the chair of public safety, the president of city council, and the city solicitor. I respectfully request your review and consideration of this adoption. This ordinance is designed to establish a responsible recurring reporting framework for the Bureau of Police regarding the use of body worn cameras. While many residents, including myself, recognize the value of body worn cameras and enhancing public trust and accountability, the value depends on more than just having the equipment. It depends on what we do with the data. That's why this ordinance calls for quarterly reports to be submitted to the mayor, city council, and CLIA. These reports will provide foundational information, such as the number of officers equipped with body worn cameras, any technical issue with the system, and once permitted through bargaining, additional data that can help identify trends and improve department policies. Importantly, this ordinance does not overstep legal or contractual boundaries. It was drafted to be fully compliant with Act 22 of 2017, the Right to Know Laws, the Criminal History Record Information Act, the Juvenile Act, and Act 111, governing collective bargaining with police unions. The ordinance acknowledges that some of the, the ordinance acknowledges that some of the most meaningful data, such as body worn activation compliance, non-activation reasons, and footage use in internal investigations relates directly to officers' working conditions. As such, it does not attempt to bypass the collective bargaining process. This is legally cautious and forward-looking. It enables the city to begin building a foundation of transparency now, while responsibly planning for deeper data reporting once labor negotiations will allow. now, while responsibly planning for deeper data reporting once labor negotiations will allow. It helps Harrisburg avoid litigation or labor disputes by proactively respecting our legal obligations. In short, this ordinance strikes the right balance. It advances transparency for the community. It respects the rights and contracts of our officers, and it's long-term accountability policymaking based on data and not assumptions. I urge the council to consider this proposal seriously and to refer it to the appropriate committee for further review and possible introduction. I am happy to provide digital copies, answer certain questions, and work with any member of this body, the city solicitor, and to refine any part of this ordinance. Thank you for your time and commitment to the people of Harrisburg. Thank you.
Thank you. You have time.
Can I pass this off to Mr. Truesdale, and he give it to you?
Yes, please. Thank you. Okay. Is there anyone else to my left, or anyone else present that would like to offer public comment? I don't wanna miss anyone. Okay, seeing and hearing no one, the time is six forty PM. I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Is there a second?
A second.
Thank you. We stand adjourned.